Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the San Bernardino City Council meeting of March 24th, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Mason.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Here.
Mayor Medina.
Here. If we'd ask our Public Works Director Jimmy Tan to lead us in the pledge this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, and our God, indivisible, with ever-forever justice for all.
Thank you, Jimmy. Public comments on items not on the agenda. Is there anything that's come through? Looking to staff, there has been nothing that has been submitted to the Clerk's office or via the website, and there is no public here honoring and respecting the stay-at-home, so we appreciate that. Let's move on to announcements and presentations. First item, receive COVID-19 update. City manager.
Good afternoon to the mayor, members of the city council, and the public watching at home. My name is Javon Grogan, and I'm the city manager, and I would like to give the council and the community an update on the city's response to COVID-19. So we have a PowerPoint and a slide that is up talks about our agenda. We'll begin with a brief update on COVID-19. We'll talk about the shelter-in-place order, and then we will talk about the actions that the city has taken, a number of the service reductions that we put in place. We'll talk about our community outreach and notification efforts, and then we'll talk a lot about volunteer efforts. And then we will be here for questions from the city council. And so let me begin by giving a little bit of the recap that I gave at our last meeting on March 20th, on Friday, just last Friday, when the city council approved a emergency proclamation. So I think as we all know, the outbreak began in Wuhan, China, in late 2019, and we are past the outbreak stage and are in a global pandemic stage. In San Mateo County, there are, as of today, 161 positive cases and one death. I'll point out that when I was here on Friday, there was only 100 cases in the county. So in the four-day period, the number has increased by 61 positive confirmed cases, and that is because we all know that the availability of tests are increasing. There's a drive-through testing site here in the county, and so as we test, we know that the number of confirmed cases will go up. Next, I want to talk a little bit about San Mateo County and just say that personally, I think the county is doing an amazing job, having sat in on their weekly briefings and the coordination that they're providing to all the cities. I've worked in a number of counties, Alameda and Contra Costa County, and the level of collaboration and support that we received here from the county is really unparalleled than anything I've seen. So the county is doing a number of things. They are coordination and our link to the California Public Health Department and the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. The city council knows that there are daily briefings of all the elected officials that occur Monday through Friday, and our county actually helped petition the governor's office for a reprieve of the Brown Act so that all city council members can participate in that call, and so you're all getting up-to-date information on this global pandemic and our local response directly from the county, which is really great information. They're also facilitating collaboration and coordination among all the cities in the county and the special districts. There's daily calls on that, and we are... One of the things that happened initially is all the cities really wanted to be coordinated in their response in the county, knowing that we're so closely related. The county set up a drive-through COVID-19 testing facility, and that is at the San Mateo County Event Center in the city of San Mateo. To have access to that, as a reminder to the community, you still have to go through your primary care physician. You cannot just show up and be tested. But there is one group that can show up and be tested, and that was a new addition, and that is our law enforcement and our fire personnel. Because they have a very close interaction with members of the public, that may very well have a COVID-19 issue, the county did allow for public safety personnel, if they have a potential exposure, to have rapid testing because we want to really isolate them so they do not infect other members of the community, and so that is now active. The county has also set up a temporary housing, what they're calling a T-HOP, Temporary Housing Options Plan, at the San Mateo County Event Center. What that is, is that we know that there will be a number of people in our community that have a positive case of COVID-19 and need to quarantine in a location other than their home. You may have a senior individual in your household that you may be extremely concerned about passing the virus to them, and so the county knew that there would be a number of people in that situation and set up essentially temporary remote quarantine site at the event center. The county also just today passed a countywide emergency moratorium on evictions for residential properties that is specific to economic issues related to COVID-19, and so the Board of Supervisors adopted that just earlier today at their board meeting. The county is also providing countywide enhanced homeless services with the goal of providing as much immediate housing as they can, and is in the process of leasing not only hotel rooms but other facilities to get our homeless population off the street in a place that will help prevent the community spread that is occurring, that is another risk population. The next slide I want to provide to council and the community is the global COVID-19 confirmed cases. And so as I stand here today, there are a total of 417,000 confirmed cases in the world, and if anyone doubts that there is rapid increase in cases globally, not just locally, look at what the figure was just four days ago when I was here. It was 271,000, and now it's 417,000. And just a couple of days before that is when we passed the 200,000 mark. The number of global deaths increased by more than 7,000, and a $20,000 person increase in the number of individuals that have recovered. The next slide that I want to share, I know the trend line is a little hard to see because we downloaded it from the Johns Hopkins website, but the basic data is there, and you can really see just the exponential increase in the number of confirmed cases globally from January 21st, where there was less than 500 cases known in the world, to over 417 today, March 24th. And so on February 1st, there were 20,000, 95,000 on March 1st, and now, because of the community spread and the ramp-up in testing, not just in the U.S. but across the world, over 400,000 confirmed cases of COVID-19, a true pandemic and the issue of our time. Next, this slide is familiar to a number of you because we displayed it on Friday, but all of the measures that are being put in place, our county measure, the state measure, and all of the recommendations from our Center for Disease Control and Prevention are all lowered, are all geared toward lowering the bell curve so that our healthcare system really has the capacity to deal with those that do get sick and need medical intervention from COVID-19. And so the statistic that I shared prior is still true. Approximately 80% of the confirmed cases, we think will not need medical intervention. 20% will need medical intervention, and the mortality rate is approximately 3% and higher among more vulnerable populations. And so what we really want to do is sort of stop interacting for a little bit and lower that curve so we can reduce the spike in that bell curve and let our healthcare system have the ability to address that 20% that we know will more than likely need medical intervention. And so the county order, I will recap that really quickly, but as you guys all know, on March 16th, there was a six-county order in the Bay Area that was issued, limiting daily activities such as travel, gatherings, business functions to only those that are essential, and it allowed governments like us to define what our essential services are and scale back our organizations, and we did that, and we'll talk a little bit about that. And then shortly thereafter, four days later, as we all know, Governor Schwarzenegger applied that order statewide, slightly different, but the net impact is the same, which is a shelter-in-place order statewide. The county order that is in effect, and a little bit more stringent than the statewide order, and all of the lawyers sort of did a quick conference and conferred that when there is a local order that is more strict, the local order takes precedent, and so we are still under the San Mateo County order because it is slightly more strict. And so those businesses that can remain open are food providers, homeless shelters, and wraparound services, pharmacies, childcare facilities, gas stations, banks, laundry facilities, healthcare, law enforcement, and essential government functions can remain open. Essentially, anything else, the recommendation is that you be at home. There are a few caveats to that, I should say, and a number, there's sort of been a flurry of confirmations with businesses saying, can I stay open? Can I stay open? And there's a resource for that, and that is the San Mateo County Legal Call Center. So the county set up a call center for businesses that have questions on, are they covered by the order? And there are a number of exceptions to that. One of them is housing construction is allowed under the county to continue, and so a number of cities, including ourselves, are continuing to support the inspection of housing projects that are going up and are in the middle of construction. And the county set up a frequently asked questions page, and SAMCITA is a resource. It is the San Mateo County Economic Development Association, and there are a number of business resources there for the public, any small business, actually, large and small, and there are actually now becoming links and resources to small business loans that are not just available here in San Bruno but available countywide. So with the declaration of emergency, the city took a number of immediate steps. The first thing we did is we activated our EOC. In the picture there is an image of the city's EOC, where we gather representatives from all across the city and have a org structure where we essentially do what we need to do to protect this community. And a number of steps were taken to define our essential services and protect our personnel. And so that emergency declaration was signed on March 16th and then ratified by the council last Friday. And so our essential services here are public safety, police, fire, medical, our public utilities, our city net cable services, water and sewer, so all of those are continuing. And any emergency repair permits, and so not only are we supporting at this time the continuation of housing construction, we are supporting if your water heater breaks or if you have an electrical issue and you have to come in for a permit, we will absolutely support that, and we know that that is essential for you staying in your home, and staff is available both remotely working from their house and, as needed, in City Hall to support that. We did a number of service modifications. We immediately closed all city counters and encouraged the public to be served online or via phone, and we are available for essential appointments only. And like most other businesses, we have a skeleton crew in-house to support really our EOC and really essential police-fire services, and then a few people in our finance department, our building, and our public works department for those essential appointments that really have to occur. We know people will be walking in for things, and as employing appropriate social distancing within our workforce, we are continuing to allow that. One example is we are encouraging everyone to pay their utility bill online and utilize those resources, but sometimes people want to come drop that check off. You can drop that check off in the mail slot outside of City Hall, and we regularly empty that throughout the day. And you can also pay with cash. We are discouraging that, but we know a number of people in our community routinely pay their utility bill in cash, and we have a limited availability for that, and we'll support that. Public meetings, we canceled or postponed all public meetings initially with the exception of city council meetings because they are essential to governance and ensuring that the business of the city is done. And so that is an example of that is tonight, where we have our audience set up with social distancing. As I turn around, there is not one member of the public here, but we know that people are watching on TV on Channel 1, and we were able to set up streaming video today, and so that is occurring as well. We are also in the process of researching virtual community engagement platforms. No one knows where we're headed just yet. We could really be in a new normal and be successful at lowering the bell curve, or we can enter a period where there are potentially more restrictions on mobility. But one of the things we know likely, no matter where we're headed, the need for virtual community engagement has increased, will increase, and we have a number of topics that will be before the city council over the next few months, and we are looking into more virtual community engagement platforms for that to occur, so more on that later. The next thing that I want to say that we set up and really created from a basis of our emergency operations plans, but frankly, it's been a little over 100 years since the last pandemic, and so tuning up those plans to deal with the issue that we have at hand was a significant lift over the last two weeks. And so we develop specific COVID-19 response levels for the city of San Bruno, a Level 1, which is a watch level, which we were at approximately a week and a half ago, which is essentially practice safety precautions and only minor changes to operations, and that's really when we had only advisory notices from the county health officer. Alert Level 2 is practice enhanced precautions and a moderate change in operations, and we have a list of the services and how they will be provided if we were at Level 2. Unfortunately, we did not hit a Level 2, and we immediately went to a Level 3 when we had the OSICS health, county health officers in the Bay Area on March 16th put in the shelter-in-place orders. And so we are currently at a warning Level 3, stringent precautions in place, and really only providing essential services. And so as a part of our continuity of operations plans, these three levels make up how we will moderate city services. And one of the things we know is that as we get through this period and come out of this, we will likely over the next six months to potentially 12 months float in between these various levels. And so the public shouldn't expect that we will go from a warning Level 1, a warning Level 3, and then we will be done with COVID-19. Until there's really a vaccine and that vaccine is widely available in the U.S., we will likely be flirting, floating in between these levels as we moderate our services to the community and take safety precautions. So we took a number of actions. We, as an entity, like most other businesses, had to immediately accelerate telecommuting. And municipal services, you actually don't have a lot of telecommuting like you do in other businesses, and so it was quite a big lift internally to set up telecommuting and the need to have some of our employees answer city phones in their home to comply with the order was a number of lift, and sort of all of our IT challenges I won't talk about, but like every other business, we have those in this new environment where everyone is trying to telecommute and do it in less than a week. But we did waive a number of fees and extend a number of timelines. We waived late library fees, all city net services. We are temporarily not doing service disconnects for non-payment. We are continuing to sweep the streets, but we are not issuing parking tickets. We are extending permit deadlines due to the unique environment and waiving late fees for utility payments. One of the things that we were also able to do, and I really want to congratulate the Fire Department in taking very, very swift action, frankly, before a lot of the other cities in the county did it, and we were able to secure reusable particulate filter masks for all of our public safety personnel. And so it's a high-level mask that is what's called a P-100, but it's a two-part particulate mask that we were able to order. We found a supplier. We were able to get them and get all of our public safety personnel fit-tested and certified to wear those, and those are good for 18 months, and so, thank you. And you should know that your city has been extremely resourceful. There are supply chain disruptions occurring already, and we have employees driving two hours away to stock up on gloves when they were available, not in the Bay Area, but you could drive two to three hours away and get them. We did that, and so we have a stock of some PPE in-house. And just today, we had an employee drive to pick up 15 gallons of isopropyl alcohol so we can make our own disinfectant because we're actually running out of what we have in stock, and our supplier is unable to provide it like everyone else is dealing with, and so we're becoming resourceful, as is all businesses and individuals in this time. Canceling events. So unfortunately, we have had to cancel all regular and pre-scheduled city programs and classes, and those are canceled until further notice. And so that's everything at our library events, our recreation programs and leagues, our after-school programs, our fitness classes, our spring camp. Importantly, we have not made a decision, and I think it's important for the public to know this, we have not yet made a decision that we will cancel summer camp, and that is a TBD, to be determined, but we are canceling spring camp that was set to launch on April 6th and go from April 10th. Senior programs are temporarily suspended, albeit our lunch program, and we'll talk a little bit about that. And a few citywide special events, our Easter egg hunt on April 4th and Social Connections, which is a wonderful program for the disabled community, unfortunately, has been postponed. And so we have been forced to cancel and postpone a number of well-loved community programs. Our senior programs, so we have canceled all regular senior programs that occur here in this facility, and those are suspended until further notice. The council will remember that our senior lunch program is well-utilized by our community, and on a regular day, we serve anywhere from 100 to 150 people Monday through Friday. We have had to stop that program in its normal capacity, but we were able to, because of a lot of local connections, identify those in our local senior community that are most vulnerable and really relied on that daily Monday-through-Friday lunch program as their primary meal. And so we do have staff delivering a limited number of meals, and so they're still cooked here, and they're delivered out to the senior community via that. And so there is a number that our seniors can call if they are really in need of a senior lunch, and that is area code 650, 616-7150. All of our playgrounds and public restrooms are unfortunately closed now, and so we are putting that out on social media and in various platforms. But similar to a lot of the cities in the county, we have closed the playgrounds due to COVID-19 and closed public restrooms, unfortunately, due to the lack of need or the lack of the ability to acquire cleaning supplies. We're really at a point now where we are starting to ration and become very diligent in how we use the cleaning supplies that we have on hand, and so we have decided to close public restrooms in large part, for that matter. Parks and open space, an important thing, so the community should know while the playground structure is closed at this moment, city parks and our open space remain accessible. However, we are asking everyone to stay six feet apart when you use those. If you go out walking with individuals in your household, you can be within six feet of them, but we all really need to comply with the health department's order, with the health officer's order, and stay six feet away. And we know that people are cooped up in their house and really want to get out, but our parks and open space are not an area to congregate. And so similar to what I think was reported yesterday in the press is that over the weekend, a lot of people, not only in the Bay Area but throughout the state, were cooped up in their house, so they decided to go to a state park. And then the governor said, you know what, we really can't have that, so we're closing all state parks and beaches and parking lots. And so we have not yet taken that step locally, but if in fact our parks become a gathering place, we may very well have to take that step. And so if you're using our park, please maintain the appropriate social distance from the other users. As the council and I think the community knows, we developed a whole host of community outreach mechanisms, and I really have to congratulate our PIO team in the ELC for an amazing job that they've done. And so there's a website, our regular city web address slash coronavirus, and there's a whole host of information on there, FAQs, links to CDC, health department resources. We are pushing out information on Nextdoor, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter. We have taken over Channel 1 and canceled all programming, and Channel 1, I want the community to know that if you have a question, go to Channel 1, watch it for about 15 minutes, and hopefully your question will be answered or you will be pushed or directed to the right resource, whether that's the county, the CDC. And so we really leverage that public access channel as a primary resource to providing the public with information. San Mateo County Alert System, we've utilized that, and we are asking the community to sign up for those, and we've issued press releases as we know. So another thing on community outreach, one of the things that is happening today, today is the Great American Takeout, and so support your local business during this COVID-19 crisis. And so today, if you have not made dinner at home, why don't you think about getting it from takeout at one of our wonderful local restaurants? And so the Great American Takeout is today, March 24th. All grocery stores are open, as is a number of restaurants, pharmacies, and childcare centers. We all know that gyms, bars, and entertainment, and any nonessential business is closed. At our last council meeting, we talked a lot about getting a list of businesses that are still open, even though it's changing rapidly. The Chamber of Commerce did step up and develop a list of businesses, restaurants that are open in their hours of operation. And so they have developed a document that is literally in the process of being refined. And so when I checked just before this meeting, it was not on their website, but it is being pushed out on social media and a number of different platforms, and so I know Councilmember Mason, it is on their website now? They posted, so they posted it on Facebook, not yet made it on their website, but we have a lot of people in the community that stepped up, and I know that there were a host of volunteers that got together and literally called every restaurant to make that list available, and so we'll be sure to push that out. Volunteer, volunteer, volunteer. So this is San Bruno, and when something happens, San Brunans like to really respond and step up to help out, and I think we've all been challenged in this pandemic, and one of the ways the community has been challenged is that normal way of sort of saying, I'm there for my neighbor, we all can't do because we're following the health officer's orders. And so in a few slides, I want to let the council and the community know of a number of volunteer avenues, both locally in San Bruno, regionally at the county level, and statewide. But before I tell you about those, I want everyone to wait, and before you sign up to volunteer, you really need to do your part. And so this is my public service announcement, too. Before you raise your hand and volunteer, make sure you're doing everything you can do to stop the spread of COVID-19. And while you may feel that you're healthy, in fact, you may have the virus and be asymptomatic and infect someone else, and so we really should be following those CDC guidelines of washing our hands, cleaning all surfaces, staying home when we feel ill, not touching your hands, nose, or face, and when you have to cough or sneeze, do it in your elbow. It's sometimes hard to remember, and if I think about what I just did 10 minutes ago when I was at this podium, I think I touched my face, and so we all have to do our part and remember that frankly, we're in a new time, and we're in a time where we have to be very cognizant of not only our own safety but the safety of our fellow neighbor. And so, but if we want to help out our fellow neighbor and we're doing everything we can, what do we do? And so the San Bruno Community Foundation, with the support of Leslie Hata Mee, the executive director, has built a website that is San Bruno-specific, that has a host of volunteer ideas where you can volunteer, you can donate, you can sign up to work at a food bank, and so there's a host of information on that website, and we have a new email address that's community@sbcf.org, and the website is you can sign up, uh, to, uh, work at a food bank and, and so there's a host of information on that website. And we have a new email address that's community@sbcf.org, uh, and the website is up there. It's, um, the San Bruno Community Foundation's website. And again, all these are sort of easy to find. I know websites are long, but if you just Google San Bruno Community Foundation, go right to their main homepage, you'll find it. Um, a wonderful website. Uh, so at the county, um, what are the volunteer opportunities at the county? So, uh, the, Samatail County has actually, um, uh, completely, uh, modified their homepage. So the homepage of this county of Samatail is now, um, dedicated to COVID-19. So if you go to the county's homepage, uh, you will see right in the middle, paying a volunteer section. And so the county has set up a, a survey where if you don't know how you, uh, want to support, but you want your name out there, you can fill out, uh, this form, uh, on the county's website and have your name, uh, be, uh, put on a list and, and flag all of your unique skill sets. And so should there, should there be a need, they will call you. I think as of today, we heard that there are over a thousand people in the county that have signed up in just, uh, the last few days since this has been up. Uh, the county is also requesting any donations of medical supplies, masks, gowns or anything like that. So if you have them, uh, please go on the county website and donate. Uh, also, uh, the county, uh, is looking for skilled medical workers. We know that, um, uh, even at, at this point, uh, that we are at now, that we are getting to the point where we are overwhelming our healthcare system. And so if you have any, um, nursing or, or medical skills, uh, please think about volunteering for your community. Uh, and the county has set up, um, a, a way for you to do that. And so there's a number of, uh, volunteer coordinator, uh, and that's up on the screen, but it's area code, uh, 209-204-9160. And you may be wondering why that's, why is that a Central Valley Stockton area code? It's because it's somebody that may live out there but decided, you know what, I'm gonna, uh, have connections to the county and I'm gonna volunteer my time. And, and the county actually has a number of people that are supporting their county ELC, working remotely and helping out, uh, many hands, helping with this, uh, unprecedented pandemic. Uh, also, uh, approved today, um, Sam, Samatail County Strong, uh, a new initiative approved by the county, uh, and seeded with $3 million that was approved just today, uh, by the county board of supervisors and that's using Measure K funds. And the purpose is to address the swift and unexpected, uh, impacts of COVID-19 and the, and the pandemic and the impacts that that has had at a really local level on some of the most, um, vulnerable people in our society. And so individuals and families really helping to cover basic needs, uh, small businesses helping them avoid layoffs, uh, and to stay open and remain, uh, a, a feasible business. And we all know how, um, sort of people were prepared, uh, and had reserves, but frankly, no one was prepared, um, for this level of impact that we're, that we're feeling now and, and, um, the potential for it to go on. Uh, and nonprofits, um, and so, uh, there's a new website, smcstrong.org, uh, and the county is asking for, if you have the ability to donate, big or small, donate to this effort. Uh, and this will be, um, led by the Silicon Valley Community Foundation. And again, the county, um, funded it, uh, today with initial seed money and so they're looking for big, for donors, large and small, to help out with this effort. Uh, and then lastly, I want to talk about the state. Uh, there, uh, is a state website, um, where you can be a disaster healthcare worker, uh, and, um, healthcarevolunteers.ca.gov. Uh, sign up there, uh, to have your name on a list, to be, uh, on the roster of people that are caught not just for this disaster but other disasters and, uh, the state will deploy you out, uh, to help communities. And so, uh, it, it's really a, a process, uh, for people with medical, uh, and healthcare skills. And so if you have those skills, uh, maybe you're retired and, and, and you want to help out now or in the future, uh, please go to this state website and sign up. In addition, uh, the, uh, the state has also, um, has a website that is serve.ca.gov. It's just at the bottom, uh, of this screen and it's for, uh, and they're essentially calling all healthy Californians, uh, to do things like deliver meals, uh, donate to a shelter or a food bank, uh, volunteer, um, uh, to provide hygiene kits, donate blood, uh, or support a local nonprofit. And, and so the state has really, uh, created that resource. And so I know initially in the first sort of, uh, days of this pandemic, everyone was saying, how can I help? How can I help? And there weren't a lot of resources out there, but now there's truly a wealth of, uh, opportunities for people to, uh, put their name on a list and even, um, um, help out both locally, regionally or statewide. Uh, lastly, I want to say if you are in need of assistance, um, from the city, uh, you can call our main line, which is, uh, 616-7058. Um, uh, but, uh, really go to the website if you can, uh, because the website will direct you to, uh, a host of, um, services and the website has the, uh, direct line for all of our departments, uh, and so all of those, uh, we have ensured, um, not only have a voicemail, but, uh, most of the time if a customer is not being served, we really want a, a live body to pick up those department lines. Uh, this is the main line that will get you to a phone tree, uh, but if you go to the website, uh, you, you'll get, uh, the number to the department, uh, to get a live body. Uh, general questions about shelter, if you need shelter, food, basic assistance, any non-medical items, dial 211 from a cell phone or a regular phone. You'll be connected to a, uh, the county's 211 system that will push you to city resources or regional, uh, resources. And there's a website there, um, for FAQs for, um, the shelter in place order. And lastly, if you have a medical issue, uh, the guidance is still the same, contact your primary care physician. That is really how you will get prioritized, uh, for a COVID-19 test and get the, uh, immediate assistance that you directly need. So that concludes my presentation tonight. I want to thank the city council, uh, for the time. I know it was a long presentation, uh, but we would really wanted to, uh, give some thorough information to both, uh, yourselves and the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Javon. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
To the chair?
Marty?
Yes, um, I haven't been able to, uh, I've been pretty good at sheltering in place. Um, just wanted to let everybody know that. So I don't know if the gun store is still open on El Camino, was that been closed?
Um, so, uh, gun stores, uh, so Peninsula Guns, uh, on El Camino, uh, when I looked yesterday, uh, they were closed. Um, I do not know if BIC 5, uh, is closed at this point. Um, I think they're, so we're, we're getting that question a lot, uh, the county is getting that question a lot. Uh, our gun store is covered on, under the, help, the health officer's order and are they essential, uh, service? Uh, I really won't say any further because the honest answer is, uh, you really need to be a lawyer, um, uh, because there's some Second Amendment issues, uh, uh, that are at play here with, uh, the ability for, uh, gun stores to, to close and, um, um, and so I, I know that there are challenges countywide, uh, getting gun stores to comply with the order. Um, and here I do believe that Peninsula Guns is closed, uh, but BIC 5, uh, as of late remains open.
Thank you.
To the chair?
Laura?
Uh, just one question, are, all the hours of operations, I know unlimited, is it still eight to five? So if you have a cable, uh, internet issue, you can call eight to five. If you have a question about your water utility bill, whatever it may be, it's all eight to five?
Yes, that is still, uh, in place right now.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Linda?
Um, so the other day I saw a post, um, it was on Nextdoor from one of the Millbrae City Council members regarding, um, flushing and that it's overflowing against some of the sewage systems. Uh, and I'm just, when I, there was an article on, about Nevada having the same issue and I'm just curious to know if San Bruno is, has any concerns, um, around, I guess, clog, clogging? I don't know if that would be the, the right term, but...
Is the sewage still flowing in, uh, the right direction? Uh, as of yet, yes, the sewage is flowing in the right direction. Um, uh, and, uh, in my last check-in, uh, with our sewer utility department, uh, they reported everything status quo. Um, I, I do want to say that, you know, we are sort of in, in unprecedented time where everyone is home using all the services, uh, and so, uh, we will continue to be mindful of that.
Thank you. The other question I had was around banks. Uh, banks are an essential service, but I have received, um, reports that I guess US Bank has been closed in all of their locations, at least in the peninsula. And so my question is how do individuals, um, get money out if their bank is closed? And how do you find out what your bank hours are if they are open at this time?
Right. Uh, and so the best resource that we could say for that, um, is all of the normal resources, where, where, whether it's looking up, um, the phone number, uh, or going online. I, I do think that we will continue to have businesses that are deemed essential by the county order that will individually decide to close, right? Uh, sort of nationally, we have Starbucks making that decision, even though, uh, as a cafe they could stay open, uh, they have decided to call, close all of their locations that are not drive-through locations. And so, um, I, I think if this is prolonged, we will see more and more businesses making that individual decision.
Okay. And then along the same lines, are there any specific, um, resources that, I don't know if it would be a legal aid group, but I'm getting messages in particular from the Hispanic community, um, asking, how do I know if I can work? Gardeners, house cleaners, um, living paycheck to paycheck, who can they contact to specifically say this particular area of work is essential or is not essential?
Absolutely. So, um, the best resource that I will say, uh, is call 211. Uh, that is the, um, best, um, sort of easiest way, um, if you, if you have a question, they will direct you. I will also go back to another slide, uh, because there is a direct, um, uh, legal hotline, uh, from, where businesses can call, uh, that Samatail County has put together to interpret the order. Uh, and so that is, uh, they're open from 8 to 4 PM, uh, that number is area code 650-363-4588. Um, um, and you can call if you're a business and you have a question on, you know, whether I, I should stay order, stay open, uh, you can, uh, call that number. But what I would actually suggest is before you call that number, go to the website and check out the FAQs because as the county's legal department answers the question, they're adding it to the FAQ. So when they get the question on and that actually came up, uh, are gardeners covered? Is that an essential service? The answer to that is, is no, they are not an essential service. Uh, and we are having, uh, I was outside of city hall and, uh, helped a resident just the other day who, uh, came to city hall wondering, uh, if her husband, a gardener, could continue to work. Um, but we are getting that question. Uh, so the best resource is one, think call 211, you will be routed. Uh, if you, uh, can go to the county website and, uh, look at their FAQs, likely your question is there. If not, uh, call the call center. I guess the other thing that I'll say for those of us that remember this presentation from Friday, the county had an email address for this legal hotline. Uh, they have taken away that email address because they really feel that they are answering sort of most of the questions. So they, uh, most of the answers are up on the FAQ website or call the legal hotline.
Okay. And another question is, since the city has closed all of its, um, public facilities and I believe most cities in Samatail County have as well, the concern becomes a sanitation concern. We, we don't have a huge homeless population here in San Bruno, um, but overall in the peninsula, there is in the aggregate, a large homeless population. And so the question becomes where do the, where do they go to use the restroom? Is it a concern that the city is addressing or are we planning for?
So we've, uh, contacted our homeless outreach, uh, uh, team from Life Moves and, and, and that has been a, a unique concern. Uh, what I would say globally, uh, countywide, uh, is the county, um, is, uh, particularly focused on every city, um, that has a, uh, significant homeless population and doing specific, um, measures for that community, right? Whether it's putting in a porta potty because they know that, um, a, a lot of the facilities are closed or doing the outreach and sort of saying, you know, we have hotel rooms. It's not just a, a shelter bed, you know? We have hotel rooms available and the county has put real money behind that, uh, and, and, um, buying out hotel rooms to get people off the street at this time. Uh, in San Bruno, um, yes, we have a homeless population, uh, no, it's not as prevalent as some of the other areas in the, uh, in, uh, in the county, but we are very cognizant of that, uh, and working with our outreach coordinator, Life Moves. Um, you know, one of the sort of truths here is that, uh, a number of the individuals, um, are more regular homeless population. They are known, uh, by our outreach workers and so that personal outreach has happened and will, will continue to happen.
Okay. And then the, uh, I just wanted to ask about the collaboration with the school district. I know this came up on, on Friday too, but since this is, uh, probably a more broadly watched meeting, wanted to ask what's going on with the communication with the school district around the schools being closed?
Absolutely.
And any private schools as well?
Fair. So we continue to work very closely, uh, with the Sam, um, Samatail Union High School District and the, uh, San Bruno Park School District, uh, and are working on a collaborative communication. Really what we're waiting for there is for the district, um, specifically the Samatail Park School District to finalize their distance learning plan and then we want to jointly push that out. And the cable department is in contacts with them, uh, for potentially a way where we can, uh, provide youth that do not have internet service at home, uh, but reside in San Bruno, uh, to potentially acquire, um, uh, internet through, um, San Bruno City Net Services. Uh, the district is also working, uh, with a philanthropic organization on purchasing hotspots, uh, wireless hotspots for individuals that, uh, may not, that may go to the district but do not reside full-time in San Bruno. Uh, and so they are, uh, looking at that and, and we are definitely in close communication with them. We have a school liaison, uh, as a part of our emergency operations center that touch bases with him every day, as well as our PIL team, uh, is reaching out to them and offering support.
Okay. Just a, a couple more questions. Um, and just in line with that, I, I think one, one really, um, valuable resource in San Bruno is the San Bruno Education Foundation and, and it was not mentioned, um, so I just want to let, um, the public know that right now there is an active fundraiser on the San Bruno Education website, which is www.sbefkids.org. And specifically the fundraiser is to, uh, for kids to access computers and internet, our most disadvantaged kids right here in San Bruno. Um, and their mailing address is PO Box 175, San Bruno, California 94066, if anybody wants to write a check. Um, but again, as of today, the fundraiser's only been open about, actually it's been open already five days and they've only raised $395 comparatively speaking to cities like Redwood City who within two days had $10,000, $12,000. So I really want to encourage San Bruno residents to give to our own most disadvantaged children, um, through donating to the San Bruno Education Foundation. Um, the last question I have is in regards to the, um, the, up to $3 million that the council approved on Friday. Uh, when will the city council receive an update on what money has been spent and how often will we be receiving those updates? And, and what is that money being spent on?
Fair. Uh, and so we're preparing that information for our conversation at the next council meeting, April 14th.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Salazar said he's good and thank you for the, uh, the report and the information. And I was going to say very quickly, because I know we want to move on, is that, um, I spoke with Leslie today, just to check since the website went out for folks that may have needs or that may want to volunteer. And of course, the community that we're blessed to have, uh, has obviously been wanting to come forward or service groups to volunteer, but we've had only, uh, at this time, as of this morning, one person that may, uh, need some assistance, but that was actually done by the police department and referred that, uh, person. And, uh, kind enough that there is a person at city hall, a city employee that knows this person and has taken, um, that on in order to ensure that that person is taken care of, uh, in the city. So again, thank you to the PD and thank you to the staff member at city hall, uh, but that's as of, uh, today. So, but again, that is an avenue and outlet in order if services are needed or that, um, you wish to assist in our local community. So thank you to the city manager?
Thank you.
For your report. Let's move on to item B. The 2020 census is here, be informed, be involved, be counted. More information available on the ci, the city website or by visiting the county website Now, I like that. See? That's taking the right precautions, Jimmy. Thank you. So our public works director, uh, will be doing that as he took the precaution to wipe down everything before starting, so thank you.
Director. I'm here to provide a brief update on the Crestmore Canyon, um, project. So with all that's going on, I do have a little bit of a good news, um, to share. Uh, since our last council meeting on March 10th, we've made, uh, great progress on the Since our last council meeting on March tenth, we've made great progress on this project. There were one remaining tieback passed the performance test on March the sixteenth. And starting on March eighteenth, the contractor began the shotcrete application on the wall. Several of those potholes along within San Bruno Avenue that were excavated to determine the depths of the existing two thirty K V and high pressure gas pipeline utilities were restored. And lastly, the contractor began cleaning up the construction site. Have some pictures to share from the work activities. This is the picture of the wall that shows all of the rebars installed. Here's another picture of the wall and the hillside that's been excavated. Picture of the tieback location. Again, more walls and rebars. And those little white pipes that are coming down from the wall, those are the drain pipes. Here, the contractor is filling the existing pothole with with the C D F, which is controlled density fill, slurry mix. Here's a shotcrete application that's being applied to the wall. It's another picture. And it's it's close to the final completion of the wall here. And this is currently a state, the states right now. And this is a picture, you know, if you get close to the sidewalk, you'll be able to see where the wall's location is, but then there's a steep drop into canyon. So what we're planning to do, the next steps, is to install guardrails at the location where you saw the barricades and the the wire fence on top of the the wall that's been installed so that we don't we prevent any, you know, any vehicles or any people, you know, crossing the, you know, going over the, you know, the side there. So in addition to that, we'll be removing and replacing the sidewalks. The cost for that is approximately twenty-three thousand dollars, but a hundred and forty-five feet of sidewalks and curb will also will be replaced. Both the eastbound and westbound lanes of San Bruno Avenue is from Crestmore Avenue to Caltrans Broadway near Skyline Boulevard is also being proposed to be repaved. We haven't gotten a cost for that yet. It's been, we've contacted several paving contractors to try to get the cost for that. So this concludes my presentation. I think we're majority, the most, the biggest portion of the work is complete already. So the next thing is just to do these three additional steps and we'll be finished with our project. So this concludes my presentation.
Thank you. And again, this was in regards to the status of the local emergency related to the repairs of the Crestmore Canyon and continuing the declaration of local emergency. Since we're almost, we're getting near complete, do you have an estimate time is when you think this might maybe complete and then therefore the declaration is closed out?
Correct. So we're thinking that the guardrails and the sidewalks can be done probably by the middle of April. It's what we're looking at. Resurfacing, it's unknown whether the paving contractors are available at this moment. That's something that we're we're currently checking with them in regards to the schedule as we're getting the cost for them. So we're thinking that if everything goes well, probably by mid-May is what we're looking at to have everything, the roadway repaved.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from council?
The Chair.
Marty?
Yes, it's great to see all the progress. Thank you. As for the resurfacing, is that going to be paid through Measure A funds for part of the paving part or is that considered part of the emergency funds?
Yes, currently it's it's that's something that to be evaluated. You know, paving can come from the Measure A or funds. It's since we're still under the emergency, you know, declaration, that's something that we have to discuss whether the funds should come out of the emergency fund or not. So then we'll discuss internally.
And we'll hear, excuse me, I'm sorry. And we'll hear back before that decision is made. It seems like the emergency part after you put the guardrails back up, I would agree that the emergency is over. Paving in San Bruno is needed everywhere, you know, in a lot of places, and we rephrase that. So I look forward to hearing that decision and getting this emergency past us. Thank you very much.
Thanks. The Chair. The city manager wanted to respond, and then Michael.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll come back to the city council if we think it's advantageous to append that additional roadway to this project. I mean, as the council knows, sometimes there are benefits to do things with economies of scale. And while we didn't plan to repave that that section, there may be significant benefits to doing it now because we will be repaving the section where the slide occurred. The other thing I want to sort of remind the council about is that there was an additional component of work that was a part of this project. It was a four hundred thousand dollar component to shotcrete the hillside. The going thinking is that the repair went very well and the engineers believe that that is something that we may be able to not do at this time, but a final decision on that has not been made. And so we will, when we come back for later reports, we'll give you a final determination on if we think that it's beneficial to do that extra four hundred thousand dollar project to create, it's called shotcrete, but essentially a concrete area around that entire mouth of where the slide occurred as an added measure of protection. But that was in the total budget that was provided to you the first time.
Michael. Thank you. My question was just about overall, now that most of the the significant portion of the construction work is done, how that we were tracking to budget and there's going to be a lot of demand on those emergency funds coming up. And so I was just wondering how we were tracking to that budget plan.
Yeah, so we have three large contracts that we've issued. One was to hillside drilling for five hundred eighty thousand dollars. That's to do all the tiebacks and the wall construction work. We also issued about another contract to Conshaw's Associates for sixty-seven thousand five hundred, which was the geotech firm that has been assisting with inspection as well as the engineering for it. And then we also had a contract for C two R engineering, which is the contractor that installed the the H D P pipeline for the storm drain that went down to down the canyon. So again, that was about a close to a hundred and four thousand dollars for that. So the total of all that is close to, I would say about eight hundred thousand dollars. We have some change orders that we're looking into right now, hoping to negotiate that with the contractor. We're thinking about approximately about forty thousand dollars change order, which is less than 10% of the the construction contract. So he hasn't given me all of the the cost information yet. That's something that I'm looking forward to, you know, discussing with him once I receive the information. And then, of course, you know, with the added cost of that, depending on how much the paving cost comes in, whether or not it's included as part of Measure A or the emergency fund, could be looking at maybe close to about about a million dollars once this whole project is complete.
And what was the original estimate that we started with?
I think one point three years, I think it's what I'm calling. I don't have the exact number on time line, but that's what I'm remembering right now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Through the Chair.
Laura?
Jimmy, also in one of the very last, well, first of all, thank you for the fabulous photos because it really, those pictures are worth a thousand words and I really appreciate seeing the progress of this project all along. In fact, all your presentations have been fabulous. Just to again reassure residents who live in the area, you know, there's one section of the hill that slid, but somebody lives sort of across the canyon in other area. And I remember you saying this, but there's plenty of sort of space between their property and where these hillsides. In one of the images, the previous one, you kind of see a hillslide that's already sort of dropped on the other side of that canyon. But I know that space is very vast and so there are no homes and no neighborhoods in any type of danger from hillsliding, so.
That's correct. There are no houses that are being impacted by this and there's, you know, there's eastbound and westbound lanes of San Bruno Avenue. There's two lanes in each direction plus the median. And the house across the street is very far away from the hillside area. So and now that it has been mitigated, we don't foresee any issues with the, you know, the roadway being impacted in the future.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? If not, Jimmy, thank you for your report. And we'll move on to consent calendar. There are two items on consent, items A and B. Is there anybody who wants to remove one of those items for a separate vote? Is there anybody who wishes to have a question or a comment on either of those items before we take action? Any action from council?
Motion to approve.
Motion made in second to approve the consent. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh voice. We'll move on to item six, public hearing.
Public hearing, hold a public hearing to receive the 2019 Housing Element Annual Progress Report and authorize transmittal to the California Department of Housing and Community Development and Governor's Office of Planning and Research.
Please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Pamela Wu and I'm the city's planning and housing manager. I have the pleasure to provide you with the report for the 2019 Housing Element Annual Progress Report. The objective for tonight is to hold a public hearing to receive the 2019 Housing Element Annual Progress Report and authorize the transmittal to the California Department of Housing and Community Development and Governor's Office of Planning and Research. The agenda for tonight, I will first start with the objective for tonight's action, then I'll present the annual housing progress report and follow with an update on various housing program. And finally, I'll conclude with staff's recommendation for tonight's action. To provide you with a little bit of background, each local jurisdiction in the state of California, including San Bruno, is required by state law to prepare an annual progress report on the status and progress of implementing the housing element of the general plan. The report is due annually by April first for the calendar year immediately preceding the reporting deadline, and the city is required to hold a public hearing before the city council and accept public comments. The April first due date is in a statute and remains effective at this time even with the COVID nineteen emergency. Since 2018, the report forms has been updated to incorporate new reporting requirements based on new state laws. These new reporting requirements include more detailed data about housing development application in the city and are presented in attachment at attachment one to your staff report. The report also focuses on the city's progress towards implementing its housing element programs and meets its share of the regional housing needs allocation, AKA the RINU number and other housing goals. The annual progress report is comprised of multiple tables. Table A and A two provide information on new residential development in various stages of the development process and affordability level during 2019. Table B provides information about the permitted housing units by affordability levels to document the city's progress in meeting the RINU allocation. While San Bruno has no data to report for tables C, E, F, and G, table D provides a detailed narrative status and progress of the housing element program and policy implementations. Table G is a newly added requirement pursuant to the 2019 state housing law update. This table shows the city's progress in issuing building permits for new housing construction to meet with the city's share of the RINU allocation needs by income category. The current housing element period covers eight years from 2015 through 2023. In 2019, the city of San Bruno issued building permits for a total of forty-nine new residential units. These consisted of seventeen accessory dwelling units, the ADUs, two single-family residential dwelling units, and thirty multifamily residential dwelling units, and they're both part of the Skyline College project. In 2019, the city only received a total of twelve new units for a housing development application, and they were all for ADUs. After the first five years of the eight-year planning cycle, the city has issued permits for a total of hundred and sixty-eight new housing units. This leaves a remaining need for nine hundred eighty-seven housing units to be permitted over the next four years. While the previous table shows units for which a building permit for construction has been issued, however, the city has the opportunity this year to make significant progress towards meeting the city's housing needs allocation by the end of the housing element cycle. Based on development application, the city has approved, that is currently processing, and the untapped development capacity in the transit corridor plan area. This slide shows a total of six development projects that are still in various stage of review, which include a total of five hundred and eighty-seven units. The annual progress report provides a list of housing element goals and programs as progress was achieved on the program in 2019. This slide highlights some of the most important achievement in 2019 towards implementation. This includes the adoption of city's development impact fee, parking requirement amendment as part of zoning code update. This also includes ongoing implementation of the transit corridor plan that included city council's approval for the five hundred Sullivan Residential Project and the adoption for the downtown parking management plan and the Sam Mateo Avenue streetscape plan. There are other additional key achievements in 2019 toward implementation of the housing element goals and policies that include continued coordination with the local school district on formal school site reuses. This include the processing entitlement application to allow Straffer School to utilize the El Cristo school site and also to partner up with the Parks School District to prepare a land use information for the Enval School RFP. As previously mentioned, council adopted a parking requirement amendment to allow various parking strategies and an updated parking requirement for multifamily residential uses. In regard to the city's Affordable Housing Impact Fee Fund and new strategies to implement the program, the city council also adjusted the impact fee in November 2019 and also authorized the funding to retain a professional consultant to develop an affordable housing fund implementation plan, which include policy options and funding opportunities for the programming of the current three point eight million dollars in housing impact fee. In the future, the city is anticipated to receive additional funds. As well, in November 2019, the city council considered enacting the urgency ordinance to provide interim rent stabilization and just cost eviction protection to tenants in advance to A B fourteen eighty-two. Lastly, the city continues to support Life Moves and participates in its countywide quarterly homelessness advisory committee meetings. Life Moves supports the city in working closely with homeless individuals and their families, such as providing services for those who are on the street or in a vehicle. Life Moves' ultimate goal is to establish stable housing and long-term self-sufficiencies for the homeless population. The staff report also includes a brief summary of local efforts to remove governmental constraints to the maintenance, improvement, and development of housing. However, in 2019, there has not been significant accomplishment in this area. The city continues to examine various funding sources for affordable housing and examine internal and external policy constraints. In terms of state housing law update, on October ninth, 2019, Governor Gavin Newsom signed into law a housing package that included approximately twenty new housing laws. An overview of these housing laws is organized in attachment two of your staff report. In conclusion, staff recommends city council to receive the Housing Element Annual Progress Report for 2019 and also authorize the transmittal to the California Department of Housing and Community Development and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. This action will will ensure the report is transmitted before the deadline of April first. Thank you. I'll be more happy to answer any question.
Thank you, Pamela, for your report. So first, keep in mind, this is a public hearing and obviously we don't have members of the public here honoring the stay, staying place and at home. I have checked with Joanne. There have been no emails thus far communicated. So are there questions or comments from our council?
Wait, a question. So there was mention of the 2019 state housing law update. Have our zoning codes and our, all of our rules, have they been reconciled with each other and all the new laws to ensure that they're consistent?
We're in the progress of doing that.
And what is the timeframe for that?
There are multiple steps and also involvement. We're hoping and looking at city attorney and city manager possibly towards the end of this year.
Oh, great. Thank you. And then my other question is regarding the 1,155 unit requirement. We have 987 apparently remaining. So can you just talk a little bit about, or maybe this is a city manager question, I'm not sure, but what has happened to other cities who have not met their RINA requirements?
So up until now, the RINA requirements have been a requirement that the city zoned for enough housing. There has not been a requirement that the cities produce the housing because we don't produce housing, right? The private sector does. Increasingly, I think what you see with State Senator Scott Weiner, the governor, and other legislators, due to the extreme housing crisis that we're in, there are more and more draft pieces of legislation. Certainly, over the last few years, SB 50 is a prime example, but there are sister bills and a number of things that didn't pass. But there are the continual potential legislative actions that will penalize cities if you do not approve housing projects when they come to you. And so we know that our RINA numbers will increase. I would say just globally, though, we know that we are in an extremely tough housing market and we are in a housing crisis at all levels of affordability. And so the spirit of RINA is that we actually allow housing to be built. And I think that's something that I know we're all working towards. And the other piece is we know that COVID-19 and the downturn in the economy and the potential recession may impact that. And so we need to continue to work towards that and work toward making housing happen where we can.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
The chair?
Marty.
So I just want to thank you for the report and also just add a couple of questions. Understandably, there's been a lot of talk and legal legislation for housing. This... There's a five years... I'm sorry, it's eight years, 2015 to 2023?
That is correct.
So we have three more years to make these numbers.
That's 20, 21, 22, 23. We have four years, including this year.
Including this year, right. So we have four more years to reach these numbers. I feel fairly confident that we're going to be able to meet the above moderate numbers, even the low ones, because we only need 27 more units there. My concern is the very low, where we have to make up 358 units?
That's correct.
Okay, that's a lot bigger than mine. All right. What should the council be doing for that? Being that it takes a couple of years generally to get a big project through, and to get 358 units of the very low seems like a big challenge, and I'm just curious to see what staff has in plan to address that.
Sure. Marty, I think the first thing I want to say is the numbers that you reported, we should look at the very last column. And so the ground we would need to make up over the next four years is 967 units. And so it's not 27 low, it's 94 low units that are remaining, 168 moderate, and 377 above moderate.
I stand corrected. You're absolutely right.
And then the very low is really close to the amount of the moderate units that we need to make up, and that's 358. I would say, to address your question, the best thing that we can do is to incentivize economic development, and when projects come before us, figure out a way to partner with the private community, be they residential projects or commercial. For residential projects, we know that the city of San Bruno has a 15% affordability requirement. And so if someone is proposing to build 100 units, they have to provide 15% of those affordable units. And so that's 15 units, and they can be at various levels of affordability. They could also pay into... in Luffy, but we have, as of late, really wanted to focus on having the units provided on-site and negotiate for additional units where we can. And so I think one of the things the city council can do is when you get a market rate housing project before you that meets the affordability threshold of 15%, know that by approving that market rate project, you're also approving affordable housing projects. I think the other thing that the city council can do is when you have private commercial development, like the Bay Hill specific plan that will be coming before the council shortly, as a part of that, there is a affordable housing linkage fee that is a part of that build-out. And I think that when we were here a few months ago, the number is just over $20 million that would be provided to the city for our Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the total build-out of what is proposed by YouTube. With that $20 million, you can actually help to subsidize the very low units. And one of the hardest, out of all those categories, the very low are the hardest to provide, and they require the most subsidy. And so oftentimes, there is municipal dollars that needs to go into those. And right now, we have an Affordable Housing Trust Fund that has $3 million in it. And so leveraging that by approving private development would provide the council with the resources to invest into those very low units. I think the other thing we can do is to look at city-owned property. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of property to offer. But if we can identify city-owned parcels, we can provide those to nonprofit developers. Unfortunately, again, with the cost of construction, sometimes there needs to be money that comes along locally to make those happen, too. And so we really need money in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, not just land.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments of council?
I just...
Linda.
To the chair.
Laura, please.
I just want to kind of piggyback on Captain Member Mason's comments earlier about, you know, what's the ramifications? We don't need these. And I think as times are changing, and we don't really know what's going to happen in the next few years, this construction that we anticipated to happen is not going to happen. And so I think a lot of these numbers, even for the future, I'm worried about. You know, they may look good today, but they may not happen. So I just think it's that much more important that, you know, when projects come our way that sort of check all the boxes. And even if it's not an ideal situation that we would all want, we need to think about housing and requirements because these are important. This is important to really support our community.
Michael.
Thank you. So, you know, as we start looking at the economic landscape going forward and just our ability to generate that many units in the timeframe, what other recourse would the city have if we're getting to the point where it's, obviously, we're not going to make it? And probably, a lot of cities are in the same position where they're not going to make those numbers. So is there any effort to work with the state to either change those expectations or rethink what they're putting out there and come up with a more reasonable or appropriate solution?
I wish we would have a chance to talk to the state to reconsider the numbers. As you mentioned, a lot of cities are in the same boat. A lot of cities have worked really hard to try to get those expectations up, and a lot of cities are suffering from the numbers of units. We are working on a number of projects that will be coming before the council for consideration. The city manager has alluded, I would just urge the city council to consider those projects as we bring them forward.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pamela. I'm being informed that we do have somebody who has emailed in. This is a public hearing, and that's the reason I didn't ask for it to be closed, that we gave enough opportunity and time. So at this time, we're going to ask Pamela if you would step back a little bit for that safe space. And Joanne, if you would mind coming up to the podium and reading the comment or question from a member of the public.
Sorry, bear with me. Dear Honorable San Bruno City Council, my name is Alex Melendez, and I make this comment only on my own behalf. I would like to highlight the necessity for more housing and affordable housing in San Bruno. We especially need housing for the very low and extremely low-income housing. Public land is a great resource for developing affordable housing. Inclusionary housing, affordable housing included in market rate housing is also a great option. Even market rate housing has its place in assuring local displacement does not take place by providing our workers a place to stay. I believe the current COVID-19 crisis highlights how much the jobs-housing imbalance plays how traffic is affected by lack of housing. The need for shelter at all income levels is the great moral issue of our time. I apologize for my late and quick comments. Sincerely, and wishing good health, Alex Melendez.
Thank you very much. Okay, so with there being no other public comments or hearing at this time, I'd like to make a motion or have a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so now we're going to bring it back to the city council. Were there additional questions or comments, Pamela or other staff? If not, this would need a motion and a second in order if we want to authorize.
To the chair, just one final comment. So I think development, I mean, it's unfortunate tonight we're in the situation we are where we have really no public comment, except for one resident. But I think housing is such an important aspect of the city, and I know we've talked about this, but I just want to really state this publicly, that we need to, at some point, look at having an open town hall, some sort of discussion to really educate the public. Because housing isn't about a decision we make today for tomorrow. It's about a decision we make today for years in advance. I mean, if you think about Measure N and how long it took to start that process, it was well over 10 years to actually pass that. So, you know, we can't approve a project today that we haven't really thought about five and 10 years ago. And unfortunately, the numbers end in 2023, but the city is going to be given new set of numbers to meet, and those numbers are going to be, you think these are bad. They're going to be worse than we're seeing today. So we, as a city, really need to start thinking long-term. How do we get there in 10 years? How do we get to that number? And in that process, how do we educate our residents? How do we educate the residents to understand the process, to understand the requirements, and that they're clear and they don't feel it's last minute? We didn't tell them, we didn't share them, we're trying to approve a project without them knowing about it? So we really got to think about the communication plan that we have with the residents, getting them to understand the process with new development. And I think that there's an education. And I think a lot of people don't understand that process. And so I think it's really important that we look at what the long-term plan is, and we look at educating the community. And the final thing would be a good communication plan. So residents go, I got a place, I got a location, I'm knowing I'm being notified. There's multiple ways we notify our customers, our residents, and I feel like everything's above board and nothing's happening without me knowing about it.
And also, to add on, I would think also, just some of the projects, Pamela, that you have brought forward, it has sometimes, been sometime, that folks are reminded about truly all the projects that are going on in the community and what has already been, like 500-silvian, has been approved. We need to remind folks of things that are in place and that are hopefully moving forward. But I think also what Councilmember Davis said, I think it is important going forward, too. It is a bigger part of our community that really wants to be engaged and be informed. If they make the decision or choice not to want to come to one of the meetings or with a developer or that, then that's okay. But we want to afford them those opportunities and the availability in which to come forward and to express within this community. It's not just about my neighborhood or your neighborhood. It really is about the city and its future. So I really think that it is important that we have a clear process, that we communicate with the developer, that the city takes some ownership, too, when it goes to reaching out to the residents in this community. So we're assured that the right list is being used, the right people are getting the information, and it gets across many levels of opportunity for folks to be knowledgeable, educated, feel empowered, and feel the ability in which to have their voices heard. So is there any other comments?
To the mayor? Mr. Mayor?
We'll go Marty. Marty.
Yeah, so the council had a retreat, and we talked about setting priorities and having a meeting to have priorities. And a priority, I think, from my understanding of the councils, is to move forward with housing. But as my colleagues have just said, we need to make sure that we have a clear process with the communication. We could learn from our neighboring cities. Burlingame brought in Home for All, which had a bunch of community meetings that educated the public before the project was even brought forward. So that is something that we could look forward to. And I'm looking to have that priority-setting meeting so we can give clear direction of what we want to do for this coming year. And we have to be thinking longer range. And so I'll leave it at that. And I know this COVID-19 has derailed a lot of staff time, and rightly so, because it is extremely important. So I don't know if the city manager can give us an update when we're going to talk about priorities again, because everybody's so busy. But I think it's coming pretty soon. Is that correct?
Hold on, can we stick on the topic of the report? And then we could certainly circle back around to that, unless that's relevant to the decision on the transmittal? Is that okay?
I think it's important to acknowledge that we, as a council, are looking at setting these priorities. And we can take a short answer later, but moving forward with this, I support this transmittal.
Okay, let me get Michael, who's been waiting. Michael?
Thank you. So I wanted to echo what Councilmember Davis said. I have heard a lot of the same concerns, and I think it is important for us as a council to be educated on the process and the public to understand what the process looks like. So when projects do come forward, it's very clear what steps are going to be taken, what the timeframes are, and so that we don't have any surprises at the end of the process. But overall, I agree, there is a regional need for housing. Something else I just want to reiterate is that we do need to keep an eye on what's happening regionally because the economy is definitely being impacted right now. I know San Francisco has made some decisions on what they're doing with their development, and they're tying new commercial activity to their low-income residential. And so they're going to limit their growth. And so if a major city like San Francisco, that's an immediate neighbor, makes changes, I feel that that could change the landscape and any future planning that we might be working on. It could be impacted. And I don't know that... The gap right now is huge, but we certainly don't want to go down a trajectory where we're going to start building houses and then by the time they're all done, nobody's going to live in them. So I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of those bigger things that are happening regionally, statewide, and just make sure that, you know, what we're doing still makes sense as we reevaluate and things continue to change.
Are there any more questions or comment on the transmittal of the California Department of Housing and Community Development?
Yeah, I just have...
Oh, yes, Linda.
Sorry, just also echoing, I've been pretty consistent on my message, even as a planning commissioner, that we need some improved communications. And I want to not just stick to the communications with residents, but also the communications around residents and how meaningful they are. So not just hosting a meeting to host a meeting, but to answer the questions that residents are really concerned about, which, you know, and some of the concerns that were raised that I had heard was what are the impacts of these developments on our water? What are the impacts of these developments on our sewer systems? What are the impacts of these developments on our school systems? I remember attending a school board meeting where it was very clear to me that the appointed administration... administration was completely unaware of the Reno requirements, and we're not taking those into consideration when considering future impacts on our schools, on our public schools here in San Bruno. So I think it's really important that not only are the communications with the residents meaningful and that our facilitators are prepared, but that all of our partner agencies are aware of what's going on and that our requirements are requirements, we're gonna have to meet them, and this is actually happening. And lastly, I wanted to say that there are other cities who've implemented communication plans that have a specific requirement that triggers that public comment period, which we currently don't have. I think in Burlingame, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe any development over 10 units triggers a public process. And so I'd love to see us actually create and approve a communications plan that includes that sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Ms. Linda, okay, this just, this does need a motion and a second in order for the transmittal. Is there any action?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh voice. And then circling back around to Marty, just as far as the potential ETA or what we had discussed in February at the retreat.
Sure, at the February retreat, with regard to priority setting, we were planning to have two subsequent meetings, one with regard to policies and procedures, the other with regard to policy setting. I believe the date that we were looking at for the priority setting was March 31st. I believe we did a poll and not all council members could make that date, and so we will be looking for another date that that could occur. In addition, there was a number of information that was sent out via email for council members to initially sort of collect their, collect their individual ideas on what the priorities for the organization could be, and we had a process where we would ship those out to all of you guys and have you rate them. But I know COVID-19 have sort of thrown a wrench into everything, and hopefully we will be approaching a new normal later on this week. And so I know we have a lot of staff that are sort of waiting to pick up projects that got put by the wayside, and so we'll make sure that we get to that for the rest of this week, and hopefully we are at a new normal and we won't sort of have our ELC planning for a pandemic and we can go back to more regular work. Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to conduct of business.
Conduct of Business 7A, receive report, receive report and confirm date for transition to a bi-district method of city elections. Consider adopting a resolution appropriating $45,000 from the general fund balance and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with National Demographics Corporation for district digging services.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, we're going to talk about a couple of things relating to district elections, and we're going to review, whoops, we're gonna wait for the PowerPoint to get up there. Okay, we're going to review the background from last meeting, March 10, 2020. We're going to evaluate the pros and cons of transitioning to district elections in either 2020 or 2022. That was a decision that was deferred at the last meeting. We're going to address some of the questions that were raised at the last meeting and in the interim, and we're going to talk a little bit about next steps. And so those are essentially determine what is that date going to be, and then secondarily to decide whether to retain the National Demographics Corporation, the consultant that presented at the last meeting and will be on the phone here this evening in order to answer any questions. So let's start with a little background. At the last meeting, we received a staff report regarding the options to mitigate the city's exposure to a potential California Voting Rights Act claim in attorney's fees. And what you'll remember about that is that that act requires public agencies to transition from at-large to district elections. And we also learned that receiving a letter from an attorney, which Burlingame had just done merely days before the meeting, could trigger a payment of up to $32,000 in attorney's fees. We have actually just heard that Burlingame is actually going to end up paying that as they transition now to district elections. We also heard from the consultant at the last meeting that litigation and other court settlements could range from six to seven figures, so the financial liability, potential liability to the city was great from not having adopted a resolution of intention. So you received a detailed presentation at the last meeting from the demographer, and the city council had quite a bit of discussion about mitigating the risk and eventually adopted a resolution of intention, which does protect it and provides it with a safe harbor. And the only decision left outstanding regarding that resolution of intention was whether the transition to district elections should be in 2020, so this November, or in 2022. So let's talk about that for just a couple of minutes, and here come some of the policy issues, the pros and cons of going one way versus the other. So with respect to the consultant's work, we have confirmed that it is possible to complete all of the required steps that are required under state law. It requires five public hearings, which is quite, quite a large number of public hearings, and perhaps especially so in these times. So we checked with our consultant, and I think he's recommended that if we are going to go in 2020, we really are going to need a much more intense and robust public outreach to get public participation remotely. Because as you can see, with the shelter in place order, we're unlikely to have large members of the public or large numbers of the public coming out to these meetings. And so in order to foster public participation at home and drawing maps online and interacting over tech, you know, with teleconferencing and so on, there's going to need to be quite a bit more public outreach if we're going to try to go in 2020. And that comes with, with I think a substantial additional expense that the consultant can tell you a little bit about. There is a little bit of good news, which is that the risk of paying attorney's fees and/or litigation for waiting until 2022 is now reduced. As maybe some of you know, the governor issued one of many executive orders recently for, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, and one of those orders extended all of the timeframes for required public hearings after an emergency specifically relating to this. So I think that if the city council did want to wait until 2022, there would be a relatively low risk in, in doing that. And the last policy consideration is waiting until 2022 would also allow for a more robust discussion of possible changes to a charter city, which was brought up last time, and we'll talk about a little more in just a minute, and also alternative voting mechanisms in conjunction with district elections. If we were to try to do all of those things and go in 2020, I think it's an understatement to say that would be a, a challenge, but the consultant has indicated that it's possible. So let's address just a couple of the questions that were raised at the last meeting. So the first one, and touching on the issue I just mentioned, which is what about considering alternative voting mechanisms? And you might remember at the last meeting, there was a gentleman from a academic think tank who's involved in voting, studying voting mechanisms of all kinds, and he had a number of intriguing proposals that the city might wish to consider. So the one thing to remember, if it wasn't clear at the last meeting, is that does not actually provide, adopting those voting mechanisms do not provide a safe harbor and do not comply with the California Voting Rights Act in and of themselves. You still have to go to district elections if you want that safe harbor. Once you've made the decision to go to district elections, or simultaneously, you can decide, okay, we want to now implement some other alternative voting mechanism. And if you want to do that, you have to change to a charter city, and that requires an election, because general law cities are, are not, there's no provision in state law to allow all of those various interesting voting mechanisms that we heard about at the last meeting. So those are two challenges with dealing with alternative voting mechanisms that could certainly be studied robustly for 2022, perhaps not as much if at all for 2020. And another question that was raised is whether the city could coordinate consultant work with the, the school district. So that was an interesting idea, because you think that maybe the consultant, that both, both agencies could save some money, retain the consultant jointly, and split the cost. And we've had a discussion with the consultant about that, that's likely not going to be a feasible alternative for a couple of different reasons. First of all is the school district boundaries are not contemporary or not, co-terminous with the city's boundaries. So there's an area that's outside the city and it excludes an area inside the city. So there's little slivers that are inside and outside, and so that is gonna create a problem in any, any sort of, we'll just do one map and share the cost. And a second policy issue about that is that apparently the mapping rules and criteria are different from, for cities and school districts, and we're not aware that the school district has discussed this topic at a board meeting or has made any steps with respect to this topic. And so I think the conclusion that we can draw from this is that it would be difficult, if not impossible, and sort of not productive to have a sort of joint effort between the city and the school district on this particular topic. So what are the next steps that we're considering tonight? And there are really two. The first one is determine the date to transition to district elections. You made the decision last time, so now the question is November 2020 or November 2022. And then secondarily, to decide whether you'd like to retain NDC, National Demographics Corporation, to be your demographer for the effort. And obviously, if you're going to do it in 2020, they need to be retained right away. If you're going to select 2022, then NDC can certainly assist in planning and evaluating the alternatives, and they can, they can certainly start that process. So with that, I don't have any further comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I believe we'll have or do have the consultant demographer Doug Johnson on the telephone. Thank you.
Yes, hello, and Ashley Tilton. Here with me too.
Can you repeat that, Doug?
Oh, I'm here, and Ashley Tilton, who was with me at the last meeting, he's also on the line as well.
All right, I am, I am being also informed before we open up the council that there is somebody who has, we have one for Item 7A that had provided to us earlier, and so we'll go ahead and read it at this time.
From Arros Harmon, 633 Second Avenue. I do not believe it is a reasonable or responsible at this time to allocate $45,000 to immediately move forward with districts for the 2020 election. It is quite likely we will not be able to even begin a public engagement process for another few weeks due to COVID-19 crisis. If some lawyer wants to sue cities in the middle of this crisis, it seems to me that any judge or jury is going to recognize the frivolousness of that lawsuit in the current context, and we should have a valid counter suit against the lawyer to insist they cover court costs and some kind of damages for wasting the court and the city's time. We should declare our intent to adopt an election method consistent with the CVRA by the 2022 election, after the current census, which also may be delayed. This, excuse me, this may be a bi-district method if it is determined that it is the only method to satisfy the CVRA, or may be a proportional method if study over the next year confirms that such a method would meet the goals of the CVRA better than districts. And we should consult more experts than simply one demographer whose income depends on drawing districts to determine whether alternate methods may be suitable. The Center for Election Science has funds available to help with adopting alternate election methods, whether by district approval or proportional method, including any equipment and software upgrades the county might need to make, to accommodate us and for voter outreach and education.
Thank you very much, John, for doing that. Okay, and that was the comment that was submitted today. Now we'll open it up to council for questions and all comments. To either the, be it staff here or on the phone. To the chair.
Michael. Got you by one second. One, just one correction, I noticed in the packet, there was a copy of the resolution that was submitted last time, and it showed a 5-0 vote, and I wanted to correct that because both council member Mason and myself voted no on that, so.
You're absolutely right, Councilmember Salazar, and in our haste, we did not catch that, so we apologize for that, and we'll make sure that that gets corrected.
Just for the record, in case I want to say I told you so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
And so it looks like the recommendation today is slightly different. I think there was a little bit more of urgency to approve the 2020 date, the last time we met. Now it seems that, given the situation, the 2022 date now is the more beneficial solution. So I think that's definitely a better approach, it's gonna give us more time to consider how we want to do this. I had a question about if we decide to, well, let me take a step back. So there were a number of solutions that were mentioned last time, we had requested to sort of dig in a little deeper into some of those options, but I believe what I'm hearing is that districting is the only thing that will satisfy the CVRA.
I believe that is correct, we can have our demographer on the phone confirm that.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Salazar, could you speak up? I couldn't hear any of what you said.
I'm sorry. The question was whether the districting solution is the only solution that will satisfy the CVRA.
Oh, it's the only safe harbor. So if you go to districts, no one can sue you. If you do an alternative approach and everyone's happy with it, well then there's no plaintiff to sue you. If someone would prefer districts over your alternative approach, then you would go to court and have to debate over which system was better. So the only way to avoid the expense of the lawsuit is to have districts. Some of these systems will work with districts, but that's the only safe harbor. The others, yes, you might win the case, but you're gonna face a big challenge if, if any single person is dissatisfied.
So let's just assume for a second that lawsuits are not an issue, and that we just want to do the right thing, and California Voters' Rights Act is, is the right thing to do, and we want to comply with it. Are there alternatives to districting that satisfy CVRA the way it's written?
I'm sorry, couldn't hear the end part of that. Hold on, it says to do what?
Could we be compliant with CVRA and not have districts?
I still can't hear you.
Can we be compliant with the CVRA and not have districts? Is there any other method that would accomplish that?
Not that would prevent a lawsuit. There might be something you could argue in court that does address the at-large system or the ability to elect, but you would not be in the safe harbor, you would have to, if any one person in the city disliked the new system, you'd have to win that lawsuit.
Okay, all right, so that, that, that clarifies the lawsuit portion of it, I guess. And are we going to get any additional information tonight regarding the move to a charter city and how that might either change what we're discussing here today, or is that something that we would just, that we would get to eventually?
So Javon, City Manager, we don't have any additional information on what a potential charter amendment or potential effort to convert San Bruno from a general law city to a charter, charter city would look like. We can ask Doug Johnson to comment generally on if San Bruno was a charter city, what that. that would allow or open up vis-à-vis elections, the election of council members.
And in terms of what the council can decide to do, so we have the power to change to a district from an at-large system by ordinance?
That's correct.
Okay. And do we also have the authority to add additional council seats?
No, you do not.
Okay.
Not for a general law city. If you go to charter, the charter can determine, you can say, we want to go to seven, nine, or have other additional seats. But a general law city is required by state law to have five seats.
I thought the state law said we had to have at least five. Isn't the language at least five?
Yeah.
Which would, to be.
Mark, it will actually allow seven or nine. It's just those three options.
I stand corrected.
All right, so then it would be within our authority as part of our plan to say if we found a map that made more sense with seven, that we would have also the authority to do that? And I'm wondering, once we start looking at scenarios, and this is to the consultant, is the realm of possibilities for us going to be tied to four districts and an at-large mayor? Or are we going to look at different scenarios that include a different number of council people and potentially a rotated mayor? What do we get for the money?
Yes, so, once you kick off the process and start the hearings, we have to do two hearings, just to gather info, and then after those first two hearings have been held, we can start drafting maps. And yes, we can do whatever scenarios you want us to look at. We've done that fairly often.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, I think it's possible to clarify. The council right now has the ability to look at adding additional council seats, right, going from five to seven to nine. And what I think I heard Doug saying is if the city council embarked on that process, you can look into changing the number of council seats. I think it's important to point out that going from a directly elected mayor to a rotational mayor is something only the voters in San Bruno can decide. And so that was part of your initial question. I just want to point that out.
Right. And one thing I was thinking about is if we were to say, okay, so even if we stick with five, and then we have, we have the five districts, we would have four, basically four districts based on our current configuration.
Yeah, based on current law in San Bruno, which has a directly elected mayor, if the city council wanted to look at districts, we would, let's say today, at your current status, it would be four districts and a directly elected mayor. If you wanted to go to seven council members, it would be six districts and a directly elected mayor. The same scenario for nine, eight districts and a directly elected mayor.
I see.
The only way the city can change having a direct, you have to put it on the ballot.
Right, okay, thank you. And we also have an additional comment on item 7A, which Joanne has and will read for us, and thank you for doing this.
So this is a comment from Plymouth. The Waving of the Brown Act, with the Waving of the Brown Act and allowing meetings to take place virtually like this one, does it still make sense to cancel all meetings other than city council? It seems like we should keep as much city business running as possible if we can do it safely. I appreciate all the hard work being done by the city council and staff. It is reassuring to hear that so much preparation has been made and so many people are working hard to keep the city as safe as possible. I still think that dividing the city into districts is a bad idea and will result in worse representation for a lot of minority communities, not better. But even if we do have to do it, we should not be doing it now at a time when almost none of the city residents have a chance to speak out about it and when the city has much more pressing problems to deal with in terms of the COVID-19 pandemic. We need to have all our resources focused on keeping the city as safe as we can from this disease, which threatens both our health and our economy.
All right, Michael's done for now. Other my colleagues?
I have some questions.
Linda.
Yeah, so this, I'm sorry, what was his name?
Doug Johnson.
Doug Johnson. So, Mr. Johnson, I'm actually looking at your presentation at the League of Cities, wherein you lay out the process for changing over to add district elections. In particular, when you talk about the safe harbor provision, the safe harbor provision begins with receiving the demand letter. And then my understanding from your presentation is that you calculate 45 days from the date of the receipt of the demand letter. Then you have the 45 days to decide which way to go. Then you have another 90 days before an action can actually begin, a lawsuit can begin. Then the second step is you place the matter on a closed session with your city council. The third step is that you engage a demographer, which would be someone like yourself. Once the demand letter has been received, then you would ask for two things. You'd ask for an analysis on the racially polarizing voting record before transitioning to the district-based elections to see if they're necessary. And then the districting, then the districting maps would go through essentially the city attorney, the city attorney for purposes of work product. And then lastly, the city council would retrieve the election results for the city's most recent elections. And specifically, I think the example that's given, I'm going to just read it because it makes a lot of sense, which is that, for example, with some cities' perspective, plaintiffs cited the absence of minorities on the city council as evidence of racially polarized voting. Because of perspective, plaintiff relied on surnames to determine whether minority candidates were elected to city council. Plaintiff's allegations fail to account for minority candidates who do not necessarily have minority surnames, such as a minority candidate who changed his or her last name after marriage. Reviewing the city's election history, the fact-check, to fact-check the allegations in the demand letter helps the city council make an informed decision. So I feel like none of this, as of right now, has been followed, and it appears that it's, that the safe harbor provision could apply if the city of San Bruno did receive one of these letters that we've heard about so much.
So that is the process you follow if you get a letter? That was the whole purpose, that is what to do when you get a letter. And the goal of that analysis is to decide how strong a case the city has if it wishes to fight the letter. And so that's kind of a get ready for battle, we're going to go to the barricades and spend whatever it takes to fight it approach. What I think the council's done through its resolution at the last meeting is decide to get ahead of the curve, avoid the $30,000 that you have to pay to anyone who sends you a letter, even if you don't fight it, and just adopt the resolution to make the change. So that's why you bypass those steps, is you're ahead of the curve and not reacting to a letter.
Right, but none of these steps say anything about having to pay $30,000. It appears that there's at least 100 and 35 days that the council would have to make an informed decision on its actions. And just to reiterate my position, two weeks ago was that I wanted to ensure that we received all the information prior to handing over $45,000 to your firm to save $30,000. And it feels like, in what I'm reading, if we did receive a letter, we would still have time to make a decision without spending $30,000.
That's not, that's not right.
Okay, that's what I'd like to clarify.
That's not the case, and I think the, I mean, Mr. Johnson can address that as well. Once you get the letter, then you're on the hook for paying up to $32,000. That's exactly what happened in Burlingame.
Is that right, Mr. Johnson? Just because I'm looking at your presentation and that doesn't say that.
The $32,000 is paid to the attorney who sends you the letter. You'd have to hire the demographer and actually that cost would be higher because you're talking about doing a liability analysis in addition to going to district elections.
So I mean, at this point, we haven't received any information on the city's most recent elections to prompt us or to trigger us to move forward to say that we have, you know, that there's racial polarizing going on in San Bruno. We haven't had a closed session on this item. We haven't received much more than the presentation that you provided two weeks ago, which was how to transfer over to district elections. And so I'm just trying to figure out exactly what information we're relying on that is prompting us to move forward outside of a possible letter out of how many cities in California?
Councilmember, let me take that. One of the things that we said two weeks ago when this was brought up is that this item was jointly being placed before the city council by the city clerk, the city manager, and the city attorney, not to in any way push the city council towards district elections, but to allow the council to make an informed decision and to avoid the possibility of paying $30,000, like a lot of our neighboring jurisdictions in the county have and like a number of cities in California has because of the prevalence of attorneys going around with the advent of state law to essentially just give a letter and collect $30,000 and then have the city launch this effort. What we wanted to do was to be proactive and give the city council the option to adopt a resolution to provide protection so no one can send the city a letter, thus turning what would be, if the city council went forward now or in 2022, a $40,000 effort into a $70,000 plus effort because you'd have to pay your demographer in either event plus the $30,000. And I think what we also heard from Doug Johnson is that in that case, when you do get a letter, you'll also be doing additional analysis on risk of lawsuit and mitigation. And so your cost may very well be more than $40,000. And so the city council took an action at the last meeting that provided protection and the decision that's before the council is, do you want to do that in 2020 or 2022? I think the other point that's worth making is, yes, COVID-19 has sort of changed the landscape on everything and we're in a different place that we are today than we were two weeks ago. That said, what you also heard from staff is, should the city council want to proceed with 2020? We can look into ways that that can occur. We will not be the only city that is going through a district election process, and so people are going to have to figure out how to do community engagement in this sort of new normal where you're having more remote participation and you think of potentially setting up kiosks or various other areas to get engagement. And so we're still here tonight with that question before the council is, in order to sort of be the most prudent and protect the city financially, does the city council want to sort of do this analysis in 2020 or 2022? And really, it's not a decision to have district elections. I think one of the public comments said that, that we shouldn't be here talking about forcing district elections upon the city. That's not at all what is proposed. What is talked about is, does the city council want to launch a public engagement process that is at minimum five meetings to start to have that conversation with the community? And then at the end of the day, the decision is always the city council's, whether you go to district elections or not, sort of legal risk aside.
So then will there be any point where we hear about anything other than district elections?
Absolutely. I think what we heard last time from yourself and I think some other council members is the desire to look into alternative election methods, being that proportional election or districts with another election methodology. And what was said then, and I think Mark mentioned in his presentation, is that whenever the city council decides to launch the public engagement, we can look at alternative methods, those that are district election, those that are district election plus something else, and those that may not be district election at all, and run that analysis on if it provides a safe harbor and what the risks are of that. But absolutely, I mean, what's before you is, when do you launch that sort of analysis and public engagement?
Okay, and then, and so, and then just a follow-up with, and Doug, so I just want to make sure I'm really crystal clear on this $30,000, because again, the safe harbor section in your presentation does give an entire process prior to any funds being given to an attorney. It seems like a lawsuit can't begin for, like I said, about 135 days. So of the cities that you've worked with, how many have actually had to pay $30,000, maybe percentage-wise?
Well, since the $30,000 and the 135-day provisions are written in law, it's true that any jurisdiction that gets a letter, unless they prevail in court, and no one has yet, they will have to pay at least the $30,000 letter. Some have not, simply because some of these lawyers sent out so many letters that they lost track of who they'd sent letters to, and they have a certain window where they have to demand payment. So there's a handful of cities that the lawyer was just late asking for money so they didn't have to pay.
Right, and sorry, I mean.
But outside of that mistake, all of them that got letters had to pay either, you know, up to the $32,000 that the lawyer demanded or had to pay litigation fees in the six and seven figures.
And that was prior to the 135 days?
Yes, yes. At the end of 135 days, the plaintiff's attorney can file a lawsuit, in which case you're instantly in the six figures at least.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted clarification on. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions or comments from council?
Through the chair.
Laura.
I'll make this brief because we've kind of been going around and around a lot here and a lot of questions, which are good questions, but I just simply have four statements. Number one, we didn't plan or did we budget $45,000 for this, and we already have a tight budget. Number two, there's a lot more pressing issues, I think, in the city that we should be focusing on this year. And number three, thankful for, I guess, governor's order that there has been a reduced risk, and so thank you for that, Mark, as well. And number four, I think, let's see what happens with the other lawsuits. You know, there are some pending litigations and who knows if things change and that at 2022, we'll be looking at a different situation and we have more options. I think we represent the city very well. I don't think that going through a process to try to push this through this year is going to make any sense. But I do hear the concern from the city clerk, the city attorney, and the city manager. In the presentation a couple of weeks ago, 43% of the communities are already gone to districting. We know that five are ready and a six one, including Burlingame, will probably head that direction. It is coming, something needs to change, but I think we can wait until 2022.
Through the chair.
Marty. So I agree. It's the law. The timing is not best, but to try 2020, for various reasons, with the census coming out, with the COVID-19 going on and trying to get a rushed product out. I believe with the additional protection, it's not a, and maybe the city attorney or our consultant could answer, it's not, the governor's order isn't a guarantee that we're not going to get in a little bit of trouble, but nonetheless, in 2022, we'll be able to figure this out. And prior to that, we could also look at district elections and look at a rotating mayor, and we could talk about those at our priority-setting meeting. So I'm in favor of moving forward for 2022 districting.
Any other comments, Vice Mayor?
Okay, so what I'm getting is, it seems like, I'm not quite sure, Michael, but that 2020 seems that nobody wishes to proceed with the current environment that we're in, the economic element, et cetera, on community outreach, but then it would be 2022. I think that's the first thing that I'm grasping from my colleagues, whether they wish to even look at it or not, but at least if it were to go forward, it'd be 2022. But then the other thing, too, it's about retaining the NDC. And to me, if we, in my opinion, if we are going to be going forward and saying as a team, we're going to look at this at 2022, go ahead and do the outreach, in my world, obviously, we're not moving forward, but I would not even commit.
world, obviously, we're not moving forward, but I would not even commit, in my mind, commit to this time, to this particular, Mr. Johnson, it's no disrespect, but I think we have opportunity and time to look further, and just to look at a more broader base, and then make that decision when the time comes appropriately. Any other thoughts or comments?
Through the chair.
Laura.
On that comment, I think the circumstance was, who can do it and get it done this year? And so, that limited the opportunities for those companies. So, I think when you're not pressured with that, then there might be other companies out there at different costs, I'm not sure. I did actually spend some time and looked on the website and reached out some information, and I, I find them to be very reputable. I find the presentation that we had two weeks ago to be very reputable. I feel that they're very knowledgeable, so it's not to say that they're not the right company, but I don't think that we need to decide that right now either.
No, and no way am I saying that. It's just those were our two questions, 2022, 2020, and retain. So, I just wanted to make sure that we are moving down a direction that we have consensus or not consensus on.
So, if I may, Mr. Mayor would recommend a, a motion, if there, if there is a majority to go to 2022 elections, so that district elections, so that will be clear in the record, and we'll, we'll have that in the minutes.
Understood.
Through the chair.
Laura.
I'd like to motion that we, that we move to 2022 for district elections or discussion, decision.
Second.
Motion made in second to go ahead and look toward 2022, if we were going to go to district elections after going to community outreach and public input, et cetera, and then making a decision at that time. Is that, do you summarize that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Marty, is that okay on your second?
Yes.
Okay. Motion has been made in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
I'm sorry, we, I think we need to, was there, did all five members vote?
I voted aye.
Was there any noes?
No.
There's, so there's one no, correct?
For the record, that's.
So, four, one.
Councilmember Mason, thank you very much.
Just, it was hard to hear. Thank you for clarifying. So, we have a four, one, Mason, no. Okay, anything else on that topic?
No.
Jovan, anything else? Mark? Okay, let's move on to comments from council members. Anyone have comments this evening?
Through the chair.
Michael.
So, I wanted to comment on the fact that this was our first live streaming meeting. It, it's something I asked for years ago, and it was really never a huge priority, and it's, it's unfortunate that it took a global pandemic to kind of force that, but I did want to commend staff for making the effort and making that possible, so that now we have another medium going forward to get our, our message out to the public and hopefully encourage more participation. I checked in, saw about 26 people logged in, so that's 26 more than we would have had otherwise. So, thank you, staff, for that. I also wanted to sort of suggest that we also look at something that a lot of the other jurisdictions are doing with other live meetings, so that we, we could hold more, more meetings, as was suggested by one of the speakers, where, you know, we could get back to more of a business-as-usual mode, if we were to allow some of our committees and commissions to do Zoom meetings, and not to push one provider over others, but Zoom seems to be a popular one with the county and with some of the other jurisdictions within the county. And it does allow people to stay at home and observe the shelter-in-place requirement and still conduct business, and they can be open to the public and actually allow the public to engage directly. So, I just wanted to put that out there. Also, on today's county supervisors' meeting, Supervisor Pine recommended that, because of the situation, that they change their meeting schedule and meet more often, and so they agreed that they would meet also next Tuesday, and move it to a weekly basis rather than a bi-weekly basis. And I thought that, not that we would have a whole lot of more information to cover, but if we were to, if we were able to do a remote-type meeting and have a few things predetermined on the schedule, for example, just more updates on what's happening in REOC, and what, what new developments are happening with, with the COVID-19 pandemic, and we could cover those just a little, a little more frequently. And also, since Councilmember Mason had asked for more regular updates on our, on our finances related to this, that would also be an opportunity to give a, a weekly check-in, at least weekly, or maybe even more often if possible. So, I just wanted to put that out there as a recommendation, a suggestion, and see if that's something we might be able to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from members?
Through the chair.
Laura.
I think, Jovan, one of your first comments when you came to San Bruno was, you looked around this facility, and you said, this is the equipment? This is the setup? And I, I know if you could wave your magic wand, that you'd want to spend the money that it takes to get us to the state of the art. And that includes streaming and a good quality. And so, I know that's a priority, that's just the money's not there. And so, I appreciate what it took to get this tonight, and I know that that's not easy. And so, thank you to staff, and thank you for everybody involved in getting us some sort of quality of a online, online streaming, so kudos. And the other comment I just want to make is, I actually completed my census, and I went online, and it was very short and sweet, and I've offered to help my mom and anybody else who needs help, so I think we, as residents, could reach out. They're starting to communicate in panic about it, the seniors. I'm required to do this, I need to do this, you got to help me. So, I think we can all reach out to the seniors that are out there that are getting this in the mail, they don't really know how to do it, and they're, they need, they need a helping hand, so.
Other members?
Through the chair.
Marty.
Having streaming meetings is great. There are a few silver linings in these clouds that we're facing with right now, and that's one of them, being able to have these meetings, identifying those students that don't have access, and hopefully getting them access. The non-ending support and of volunteers in San Bruno, and having the San Bruno Community Foundation put together a website to make those connections. And I just want to thank everybody. We, we have to shut down and minimize contacts to stop spreading COVID-19. Very, very simple. In the conference call with the, in the county today, there's too many people that are going out and disregarding what everybody else is telling them. And the sooner we all comply, the sooner we will be off of these restrictions. So, my last comment, announcement is, there is a Second Harvest grocery distribution occurring Thursday at Bel Air. However, we have to keep in mind to protect the community and protect the volunteers, that is, we're turning that into a drive-through pickup event. You can still call Second Harvest to register and find ways that we can get food delivered to you. They're at 1-800-984-3663. You can call them from the hours of 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. So, look out for each other and be safe. Thank you.
Linda.
Yep. Okay. Just a couple of things. One is just, I'm echoing all the council members, it's really exciting to have a live stream meeting, so thank you to our city manager for getting this together, and thank you for San Bruno Cable. While everybody's at home, we have, counting right now, three San Bruno Cable members, and we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, probably about eight to 10 staff members here practicing social distance, but while everybody's at home, they're here to ensure that our meetings are, are moving forward and that the public is informed on what's going on. So, thank you to staff and to San Bruno Cable, and thank you for live streaming. I wanted to also thank all the grocers. I know that there have been announcements going around, but just a reminder for everybody watching that in San Bruno, Leckies has special hours now on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 6:00 to 9:00 a.m., Lenardi's on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 7:00 to 8:00 a.m., and Molly Stone's Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays from 7:00 to 8:00 a.m., and those are for seniors and the immunocompromised. I wanted to also just, a reminder and to reiterate the message on Friday, and the consistent message from the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, which is, please do not hoard, please just buy what you need. We have not had a population boom here in San Bruno. If you buy what you need, you should not have to buy, you know, a million rolls of toilet paper, which is why we don't have toilet paper when you go to the store. So, please just get what you need. And then lastly, I just wanted to encourage everybody to read the San Mateo County Health Officer's recent statement that came out yesterday in regards to COVID-19. It is, it makes what's happening right now in San Mateo County and the rest of the United States and the world actually just feel incredibly real. And I wanted, in, in honor of, I guess, today's takeout, takeout night, read just the last paragraph. And what he says is, "As for the demand shock, look around and determine which small business you'd like to see still in your community when this is all over, then patronize them. Even if they are not open and you can't get goods and services from them, you may want to consider paying them for services you might have received from them, or they will be gone." So, with that said, I want to really encourage everybody to support our local businesses. I want to thank Saidha Stroud, I want to thank Chamber Ambassador Karen Cunningham. She personally called every restaurant on San Mateo Avenue, on San Bruno Avenue, Mills Park Plaza, while Ashley McCowen actually went to each business personally in Bay Hill, Town Center, and El Camino Real to create that directory that Jovan showed earlier. It's now available on Facebook, and I believe it's going to be available on the Chamber site. So, please, if you're watching, please, please, please make sure to go and patronize our local businesses. Thank you.
And for me, I'll echo a lot of my colleagues in. Yes, on the streaming, but it's, these folks are behind the camera on the other side. Thank you for all your effort from Friday through today to make sure that this actually happened and occurred. Thank you. Also, you know, I think that we, we have to heed what is being said. You can watch the news about the surge, you can watch the news about, you know, trying to stay and only go out for essentials, but it's about the safe distance. And this Saturday, I did have to go to Town Center to pick up some stuff, I did not hoard, but it was just some simple items, and it was good to see that there were stuff on the shelves. But what I did witness was a gentleman and a lady, and, and they weren't the millennials, but hugging in front of the store, embracing. And it's like, what aren't we getting? In, in a line, you know, you try to keep that distance, so I'm moving forward, the person's moving up behind me, and by the third time, then it kind of rang the bell, like, oh, that's right, safe distance. So, I think it is really critical, and something that we learned from some of our colleagues in other communities, that folks are taking a travel over to Half Moon Bay or Pacifica, to where you have a Pacifica person who works for San Bruno, who, her and her husband went there over the weekend just to take a walk and turned, drove away. It was too crowded. The Half Moon Bay mayor has told us that, you know, he went and tried to enjoy his beach, and it was so packed with folks. So, the thing is, if we don't take it serious, we could find ourselves having more strict standards placed upon us until we get over this. I think it also was enlightening to me to talk to Nadia, our Parks and Rec Commissioner, who goes to Capitino, talking to another person who represents the San Mateo Union High School District and is the youth rep on that body that represents Kenyatta, Skyline, and CSM. And to hear their perspective from their youth, is that some, I'm not saying them, some feel that the youth is, I'm okay, I'm healthy, my friends are healthy, it'll be like the flu, maybe it's an overreaction, to this social media that they're seeing that are of their friends and them being together and enjoying each other's company. And I think we have to take very serious. It's not about that you won't get over it, or that you can't, it's about what you will do to others. It's about you being a carrier, it's about you bringing it at home to your parents, to your aunts, your uncles, your grandparents, or to others that you may see that you don't even know. And so, I think we have to heed very clearly, and I think this council is resolute, that we need to take it serious. We need to look out for each other, we need to support our community, we need to support our businesses, but we also need to stay safe, and that will save lives. So, I hope we all heed that as we continue on this week. So, with that, I thank you all for joining us, and we will go ahead and adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on April the 14th, right here at the San Bruno Senior Center at 7:00. Meeting adjourned.